Obvious of the Mayor, City of Groton, Connecticut, proclamation, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Groton Emergency Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of the City of Groton Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatments of patients, and whereas East Dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past, therefore, be it resolved, I Keith Hedrick, Mayor of the City of Groton, declares the week of April 9 through 15, 2023, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, in the City of Groton, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause a seal of the city to be affixed this 10th day of April 2023. Signed, Keith Hedrick, Mayor, City of Groton. In addition to that, starting tomorrow, we'll be flying a telecommunications flag which is out, out front. So we need to... You know what? We don't need... Let's do this. All right. Does everyone have a microphone, working microphone? Okay, now. So continuing on with the agenda, it's new business or referrals. This is city budget presentations, so we're starting tonight with our city budget presentations. Human Resources is on the list. Belinda is out sick today, so she will not be presenting her budget today. She'll be presenting it on the 17th, which is next Monday. Okay, with that, we'll start with fire. That's on page 58. So Chief, if you could come up?
All right, good evening. All right, I believe you have the Fire Department's budget in front of you. We've obviously gone through it other years. If you have specific questions, I gladly answer them. Couple of things I will note going down that you might have noticed, a couple of line items. Professional development. Requested 16,000 this year. It was eight last year. That is training, all training. It's also college courses that some of the firefighters are taking. And the reason it jumped 8,000 this year is in anticipation of our senior captain, Mark Cassidy, retiring next year. We'll need to hire a new firefighter. And so it's just in the preliminary stages, but I would like to find a way to... We're a small department, so we require a lot when we hire somebody, a lot of certifications in order to start the job, you know, running because, because we are so small. And so it's very hard to attract a diverse workforce. My department does not have a diverse workforce at all. And so in trying to potentially get to that, I'd like to be able to open the pool up a little bit and then send the candidate to the Fire Academy, which is up at Bradley Airport on the backside. And that costs approximately $8,000 for the academy. So that's why I requested that. The mayor was receptive, and so that's why it's budgeted. There's still some work we have to do with the union and all to, to get to that point, but that is why that line item's gone up so much. Other than that, if you have specific questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, we open the floor up to the council. Councilor Sheffield?
Thank you. H and H?
Yes.
Defining, I guess?
It is heart and hypertension. It's, you know, state statute, which is actually sunset. There are, we do have some retirees that are under heart and hypertension. And so that number is, if you notice, it's 50,000. That's what we use as a placeholder. This year, it's, we're well below that, but we, we don't know what that number will be. It pays for, say, high blood pressure medication, things like that. But if somebody really fell sick or had an operation, which they have, I believe, in the past, then that, we are responsible and obligated to pay that. It goes through workers' comp. It's non-refutable for these employees, for the retirees that are under it. So that 50,000 is what we always use as a placeholder.
How many do you have specifically, do you know?
I don't know. Not many. Unfortunately, over the last few years, a lot of our retirees have passed. So I can think of definitely two, but that might be it. There are no...
No, there's still active employees that...
Active employees, yes, right, right. I was looking at retirees. We have one active employee, I believe.
Is at least one, and then there's a few retirees. I can get that number for you.
Yeah.
And just because they filed a claim, it doesn't mean we may have expenses in a given year for that individual. It's truly based on their medical. It's administered by a third party. They review it. So even if something does go through them, they will take a look at to make sure it falls under the heart and hypertension that was applied for, and then we pretty much self-funded for it, and we have to pay the 100% of the costs that are associated with it. Like you said, there was a few years back, three or four years, we had a retiree who had heart surgery, which completely went over the budget on that line, which we knew about it. They tried, they went back, insurance carrier went back and forth with it, but at the end of the day, we ended up having to cover it.
Okay.
So correct me if I'm wrong, I think we also have some police officers on this as well?
Correct. It's only, this was a statute that sunset, I forgot what year it actually stopped at. There was certain criteria that you had to meet with it, and it was for police and fire. And there are current police officers that are on it as well.
Thank you. So when we compile, just give me the whole, give us the whole list. So just to catch councillors up, if you're not familiar with this, there was a, there was a statute that said you got to provide heart and hypertension. It was for the firefighters and the police officers because there was a prevalence of heart issues. And so, and then they sunset it, but as long as you were in the program, it follows you to life. And we do have some firefighters and police officers, some that are still active, that are on this program. So we put aside $50,000, knowing that if we have something catastrophic, it's not going to cover it all, but it'll, it'll take a dent out, and then if, if there's small things, for example, medications, things like that, then the $50,000 certainly will cover that. So trying to take care of our obligations. Anything else? Okay. Deputy Mayor Depot, and then I'll come over here, and then I'll come over there.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you already answered one of my questions. And I just want to say, I went back at, last year, one of my pet peeves was that the estimate for the year was not accurate. And I did go back to last year's estimate, and you came in 2.9% under budget last year. So I just want to say I appreciate, because clearly you looked at the, stayed within budget and used the money that you asked for. And so that's first. I just want to say thank you. To me, from my perspective, that makes me more apt to approve the funds that are asked for, because when, it's frustrating when people ask for funds and then they don't use them. So my only real question is, actually, I have a couple. Under Pension Volunteer, last year you had an estimate of 2,000, but your actual was zero according to the budget. And then your budget request, or rather, the budget ending in 2022, your estimate was that you were going to use 2,000, but we didn't, the actual is zero. And then this year's budget is 1,100, and estimate is 1,100. I know that's a really small amount, but can you explain what that is for?
Yeah, so if you look, there's actually a line item down lower that was for, that was for volunteers. We used to have volunteers. We no longer have them. So volunteer money has been zeroed out in general, but we did start a pension program years ago for the volunteers. And so there are volunteers who are under that plan, either currently collecting. We have one collecting, I think, one who can, but he hasn't filed the paperwork, and a few that are too young to collect, but they will be eligible to collect at some point. I've been looking, you know, I would much rather get rid of that plan, but the plan is funded. Some of that money used to go into fund the plan, but it's overfunded. So there's plenty of money in the plan to pay the employees, because there's no more volunteers going into the plan. But they do an actuarial report. Someone manages those funds, and that's what that $1,100 is. And that's why it's been trending down as we're trying to get a grasp. We used to put in, like I said, money into the fund and have the actuarial report done. The fund is full, you know, it's fully funded, but we still have somebody administering it.
So that's in case the person claims, then we have the money in there to pay it, even though we didn't use it last year?
The money's in there, but somebody's managing it, and they charge you to do an actuarial report for it.
Yep. And then under Facility Material and Supply, our budget this past year was 17,000, and it looks like your estimate is 17,000, but in the prior budget year, your estimate was also 17,000, but then we went over budget by that $23,666.
Yeah.
Again, not a, not a big amount. Can you just elaborate on why that would be a fluctuating cost? Like what under that is a thing that would be unpredictable?
We had HVAC at Company Two that needed a lot of work. And so that's, the facilities is both stations and everything, you know, there. And besides the cleaning products, the bigger, the bigger amounts are the HVAC systems, heating at Company One, sprinkler systems, which we had a problem with a couple of years ago, I believe you were here, that we had leaks in. So that, we had problems at Company Two with our HVAC system that needed to be repaired.
And then last on the list, program equipment. In the, your actual for year ending June 22 is zero, but our estimate was 15,000. Can you explain what that cost is for?
Yeah, I, that's an accountant thing, I think, from finance, but we purchased gear. If you remember, I've come before you to purchase the gear before, and we encumbered that money because we ordered the gear the very end of last year, and it came in this year. So that money was encumbered, and so I think that's why it's showing zero. We budgeted 15,000. We spent 15,000, but it was encumbered. So how it hits the budget, I'm not, I'm not sure how that, that's an accountant thing.
These numbers were probably pulled right from your expenditure detail and not including the encumbered piece of it. So it was just encumbered at year end, and so it would really be applied at, to the actual 22 numbers. It just wasn't included in this, in the budget book. So what we, what we do is, at the end of the year, if somebody has an expenditure, but we haven't received the product yet, or like, so this case was the uniforms. So we may have ordered them, but we had a commitment, so we can issue a purchase order to the vendor, which allows us to purchase it after the fiscal year is over, but then it comes out of the prior fiscal year. So it's truly just the accounting piece. So there should have been 15,000 in program equipment that was encumbered. That, it just, the encumbrance piece is missing from that total, is my guess from...
Right, because that, yeah, that was encumbered.
I can take a look at that and get back to it.
But does that mean that we, that the 15,000
Was spent.
On year ending 23, is the 15,000 that we estimated from year end 22?
No, that's another 15,000.
So then it, then $15,000 is floating around and not listed in this?
It's not included in the expenditure, correct? There's another 15,000 expenditures missing from the fiscal 22 line. I can double check that if we encumbered that money at year end.
Okay.
Yeah, the 23 has 15,000 program money, because we just purchased three new sets of gear. So there's a purchase and order out for, for that, for three more, three more of the firefighters.
So my question then, I guess Ron, for you, is if that was at the end of last year, why, why wouldn't it be in the budget that's prepared?
It would have gotten, so what happens when you run, if just a trial balance report was run, and it pulls up just the expenditures that was paid out for the year, then there's another column that has encumbrances, and the encumbrance piece must have gotten missed. But let me double check it, and I want to go across the board and check that, now that we're coming across that issue with this one.
Okay.
So it's just when, the way that the springbook report picks up, if you don't pick up both columns out of the budget report, you may miss it.
Okay. Very last question. We are increasing the reserve fund for equipment. The last two years, it's been $200,000, and we, in your budget for this year, you're asking for $300,000. I guess two questions about that. What is the main reason for that? And was that the plan as of last year, or is that because you reviewed it this year and found that we're going to be underfunded on the vehicles that we needed?
Well, a little of both. We are definitely going to be underfunded on the vehicles that we need for multiple reasons. The, the capital plan, you know, which Chief Delia years ago started, was not funded for various reasons, you know, over the years. The trucks have also gotten more expensive, like everything in the world. So we have a ladder truck and an engine that will both come due approximately at the same time. I think we've had that, you know, because we, we did fix one of the engines and all. But, you know, the ladder trucks are at least a million and a half, and the pumppers are $800,000. So, so we're behind on those. So Mayor, the mayor's been boosting that. That's why we've been doing, part of the reason we've been doing $200,000. Some of that money is here marked for smaller vehicles, like my replacement car and things of that nature. And also $10,000 over the last four years is for buying Scott bottles for our air packs, because they, they will be out of life this year coming up, so we'll have to replace them all. So we've been putting aside for that. This year, we, we, Mayor's suggestion was to go to 300,000 to try and catch up on what we really need in there. And, and we did that because we, if you remember, in the, there's a line item in the budget for contractual services, which is lawyer fees. That's what traditionally has been negotiating and things like that. We had $100,000 in there as a, as a placeholder for plan review and things of that nature for EB and new, all the new construction they've been doing. So we did not need that in that line item any longer, and the mayor wanted to try and catch up in the capital fund for the future truck purchases.
Perfect, thank you.
Did you want to say? Okay. So part of this is in my direction, and when you look at a high-cost capital equipment such as fire trucks, there's a couple of different ways you can go. You can pay for them out of taxes. You can bond them, or you can fund them along the way. This is a designated fund, but it's not a lockbox. So future mayors, future chiefs, if they are not as fiscally responsible as we are at this point, that could get raided. But what, Director Uhas and I and Chief have talked about this, and we've decided to go with a hybrid approach, because both of our, our high-cost fire trucks are going to reach end of life within 18 months of each other. So one of them, we will bond. The other one, I hope we will be close to having enough money that we can pay for the cash out of this account. So that's my logic. There's a couple of different ways of looking at it, but, and although, although, all of those ways can be defended, but right now, since we have some capital and we have cash, then I want to go ahead and do that. So that's why we're going in that direction. Did that also help?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Piazza, and then Counselor McCray, and then I'll come back.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, most of my questions were answered already. But one of them, on your H and H, just as, this is not per budget, but just reflecting off of that. So when you have the heart and hypertension, do you have a program or something for, for prevention of it that follows them along with their health, besides the physical, that would, basically, the goal would be to have less employees with heart and hypertension issues?
Yeah, so not, not a line item. I mean, we're really, because that was state mandated, which is, and again, that, that law has now changed. So as far as retirees, no, there's no. But the current employees, obviously, we, you know, have a gym at our substation down at Eastern Point. I don't know if you've ever been there, but, and the guys are very active, actually, working out. We also, they also have a small area up at headquarters, so when they're up there, sometimes they'll go down to the other station to work out, but they work out up here. And they have peer, peer programs to help each other, you know, try and keep active and, and continue on exercising and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? Okay. Counselor McCray? Okay. Counselor Sheffield, you have the floor?
Back to the contractual services. Now, like I said, you had the bump of 100,000 for 23, and then it's going back down to 10,000. You won't anticipate needing additional funding after?
Again, that's a, one that can move, historically, no. Usually, we have budgeted $10,000 in non-contract years, and then $20,000 if we are going to be negotiating. So we had a three-year contract, so we are not negotiating next year. It'll be the following year. So historically, we've made it 20,000, because then we are using lawyer fee. Otherwise, it's really, you know, review of different things, grievances, if, you know, we've been very labor-friendly. And so we haven't had any, any grievances, I don't think, in my five years, so.
Also, the reason we originally started this line was the same reason that we bumped up Joe Summers's budgets was for the construction work that was being done at Electric Boat Building, 600, South Yard Assembly Building, the building that's right in front of that, 605, which is the off-crew coats building, and then 604, which is on the West Side Engineering Building, the new building that they just put up. So the, so we issued a CO for 600, and a CO for 604. 605 will probably issue a CO, what month am I in? I'm in April. Probably in May or June. And then, so there is still construction at EB, but this was primarily for if we needed third-party reviews or if we needed additional support, that's why we had that in there. Now that we're ramping down on the construction, we don't think that we need this anymore. And so Ron and Chief and I talked about this. Let's take that $100,000 and put it in to the equipment, and that's where you saw the, the increase in reserve fund from 200 to 300. So we just shifted it.
That's come back into the, you know, most years, most, you know, has come back. We have used some for plan review and things like that as outside help.
Counselor Norris?
Hey, Chief. Can you please tell me, like, what percent increase are you going up for '24?
Overall?
Yep.
Overall, you went, oh, no, never mind. 3.54.
Yes.
Page 59?
All right, thank you. And then?
Some of which, a lot of that is contract, you know, contractual.
Right. Going back to, so the end of fiscal year '22, that actual number is short 15,000?
That's what it appears.
Okay, all right. So fiscal year '22, do you know what percentage you were above, below, or break even with your allocated budget? Because I think I heard that...
Actual versus budget, is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
For '22?
Which, which is slightly off because of the 15.
$15,000 in a $3 million budget is, is a couple of decimal points.
Got it, got it, right.
Okay. So you underestimated, so...
Got it.
Sorry. My apologies.
That's okay. Deputy Depot clarified. All right. Could you help me, like, what, what is the stipend that's in your budget?
Sure. So at the top is obviously full-time employees. That's all of us. As you go down, longevity is just what, and there's a bonus for being here, firefighters contractually. The stipends are, they, the firefighters get a $1,500 a year stipend to be EMTs, and the deputy chief gets $800.
Now, when you say stipend, you don't mean like a clothing allowance? You mean actually this stipend goes towards their pay?
It, it's called the stipend in the contract. They receive a check as pay, yes.
Okay.
It's, it would be counted in there, W2, basically, at the end of the year as, as income.
And how is that stipend determined?
It's contractual. $1,500.
Oh, just a flat 1,500 per person?
A flat $1,500 they receive in June of every year.
And what is sellback of time off?
So as you can imagine, they, they, firefighters don't get holidays, right? Because we're always staffed. So they receive 10 hours of holiday pay for each holiday. And if you notice, this year it went up because we added Juneteenth. So besides the fractional, because it's based on an hourly rate. So, you know, as the pay goes up a little bit, it goes up a little bit, but the big jump is because Juneteenth was added as a holiday, and so they, they get paid that.
Got it. And generally speaking, over the past couple of years, how much you think you actually spend at the end of the fiscal year with your professional development? Is it more than 5,000, less than 5,000, generally speaking?
With the professional development?
Yeah.
Now, we're, well, it's, it's 8,000, it's been 8,000, professional development. And now we went to 16. So, you know, I try and, I try and spend that, I don't mean that in a bad way or a flippant way. If you notice, some of the line items are below, but that's also because the other line items, like, you know, the truck account last year, which is maintenance on the vehicles, was over, you know? So in trying to stay balanced, there are things that I'd like to do that I can't or don't do because I know I'm going to be over in the truck account. And so I'm trying to balance those two things off. But we do have one, one of the firefighters has been going to college. We just, the city just paid for his last class, so he'll get his bachelor's. And then, and then training. Part of the, part of that is training, on-shift training. The hard part with that is that it goes along with the overtime budget, because in order to train, you know, you got to bring the guys in, and then you got to pay them overtime. So the overtime budget had been running high, because we've had vacancies and workers' comp. We're doing very well this year with overtime, so we've done more training and will continue as the year is progressing here to the end. So we use most of that $8,000.
Thank you. And the volunteer, no, the pension? And the volunteer, no, the pension volunteer. True pension plan and its true meaning pension plan. So do we know what the total dollar figure is in that? Is this separate, I guess, from the city? So it, it would be kind of nice to know what's in that big bucket, just for information's sake. I know it really doesn't do much to the budget.
I would, I'd love to get rid of it. I don't mean in a bad way. I'd love to buy them out and just not have it be, you know, be there.
Sure. Uh, just two more questions. The reserve fund. So what I hear is the reserve fund is we put money in here every year that goes, that sits somewhere. And then when we need it, we buy a truck or something new. So again, if we could find out what dollar amount is in that bucket? And if you could also tell us in some shape or fashion, what, what is the plan? Do you have a three-year plan, a five-year plan for that reserve fund? Cause that, that'd be interesting to know. And then the last question is, program equipment. I know what's in it, but I'm surprised you didn't ask for an increase. And I wonder, is it because you have most of everything you need? There's not, like, because in my brain, I go, okay, most program equipment for fire is going up a little, pretty hefty. Um, so I was just like, hmm, that caught my eyes, like, there was no request for increase there.
Right, um, so, you know, just trying to be fiscally prudent. We, years, years ago, um, we used it for hose. We needed to replace all our hose because of new standards, uh, so we did that. Then we segue to, um, to turnout gear. We, we buy turnout gear. We've been buying three sets a year. Fifteen firefighters, that means every five years you get a new set. And by NFPA standard, you want to be within ten years. So they have a frontline set and then a backup set that are both within ten years. So when this one gets dirty or God forbid it got damaged, you have the backup set or you're washing it, you have the backup set. Um, so last year, we used all for that and then some. We use money out of, I drew money out of the budget and because we changed the gear, if you remember. We did a, a study and we changed vendors and bought, we're buying new gear. Um, so we're in the process of that. We bought, uh, eight sets last year. This year, we bought three with the program money. They just came in. And now we're down to, we only have three firefighters who don't have the new gear. That's our captains. The gear is now black. I don't know if you ever see them in the street, but we used to be tan and, and it's now black. Um, so we have, uh, that money moving forward, um, to buy the three sets next year or thereabouts. Um, and so I just felt it was.
But do the new sets also include potentially this new hire that you're going through?
Well, yeah, be, yes, excuse me. Because, um, the three people who don't have gear right now are the captains. So from a standout point, they have a different, which is not unusual to have a different color gear for the captains and the firefighters. So that's kind of the way we move forward. They will ultimately segue into black, but we will not be buying a new set of gear for Captain Cassidy. Actually, he was due for a new set of gear last year and we knew he was getting close and he said not, you know, without, you know, obviously you can retire when he would like, but.
So here's a question. I don't mean to put you on the spot, so I apologize if I make you feel uneasy. Is what would the procedure be to add money to a budget? Cause my personal feeling is you're gonna need a little more than the fifteen thousand for your program equipment. And I'm not saying you're not doing well with your budget, you know, I, I, I just think it would be very helpful knowing that you have some type of leeway, um, with new hires, equipment pricing is just going up. So I didn't know if there's a mechanism where counsel can make a referral to increase a budget.
We, we've not done that since I've been here. How do we do that? I mean, is this the process now or do we wait till the end? Or do they do it anytime in between if they want to make a recommendation? Cause they would need to vote on that, right?
Right, I believe in the past when we've had budget cuts, it's part of the budget approval of the council that all of those changes get incorporated into that resolution, um, that are obviously discussed beforehand.
I understand.
As, as you're going through. So it'd probably be the la, I would assume, not to speak for the, the council, but the last cow prior to going into that meeting that you're going to approve the budget to have everything in line, whichever changes that you feel to the budget that you want to make for the council-approved budget.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, so Counselor Norris, have that itemized?
Yeah.
Be ready and we'll discuss it at the last meet, the last cow before we go to the final budget meeting at the council.
Got it, thank you. Sorry, Chief.
Excuse me, is there anything, anything, any other questions? Okay, that's it, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief.
All right, so next is administration. That starts on page nine. So we'll go to page eleven. And this is for legislative policy. You'll see that we have a thousand dollars there. Uh, the estimated for this year, six hundred. The change, we usually go around a thousand dollars. That is for counselors to go like to CCM or to trainings or other workshops. You pointed.
Oh, cause I remembered.
Oh, okay. The other budget or this one?
This one.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll get to it in a minute. All right, so that's what we have there. Then if you move on to, uh, page fourteen, boards and commissions, you'll see that that's down seven point nine percent. And that is mostly for the retirement board and for the attorney and the actuary. If we then go to page seventeen, that takes us to citizens' participation. It's up twenty-one point four three percent and went from, uh, seven thousand to eight thousand five hundred. The logic behind that is, if you go to page eighteen, under the, under the, um, specific line items, we went from five thousand to sixty-five hundred for Groton Day because we, this is a true and actual. We're, we're moving, we're moving the money to here, but it's actually going to fall under Mary's account, right? Mary will spend the money, she's in charge, Parks and Recreation Director is in charge, but we have it accounted for in my budget. In addition to that, you'll see the two thousand dollars for beautification, we're keeping that. That's, uh, we're going to see if we could pull off a parade this year. We'll see if we can do that.
Right here in the city?
We're gonna, we're, yes, we're gonna. Well, that's beautification events and then, well, beautification events is like, on the twenty-second, I'll invite you all to Groton City, this is cleanup day. We're having Groton City Cleanup Day on the twenty-second. You're all invited to that. Anybody that watches this meeting, you're invited to that, uh, Groton City Cleanup Day. What time does that start? Nine, so it starts at nine o'clock and come to the municipal building and you can pick a street or we'll assign a street. And it's an opportunity for us to get out and get familiar with your community and help pick up trash, help beautify the city of Groton. So continuing on, uh, where did I go with the general fund? So we, oh, no, never mind, that's the funding source, never mind. All right, so we're good. So that's that. So let's go to administration on page twenty, six point two seven percent. If we go, if we go to page twenty-two, under the itemized. So the salaries, full-time employees, the salaries is three percent increase for the clerk and for, uh, the executive admin. And then if you go down to the bottom, under, where am I here? Whoops, actually, it's on the next page. On page twenty-three, you'll see that my salary is recommended to go from eighty-five to ninety-five. It, ninety-five thousand, it has not changed. Uh, I don't think it's changed since I came in, right? Or did it change the first? So it changed the first time, Marion raised it from seventy-five to eighty-five and then it's been eighty-five since. Uh, if you look at my benefits, going back to page twenty-two, benefits is a five percent increase. That's what the non-departmentals were. The non-departmentals, that's a number that we use across the board for, uh, for our budgets. If you look at utilities and fuel, that's copier phones. And if you look at, went from thirty-five hundred to forty, forty-four, thirty-five is estimated for this year. That's due to an overage of a data plan that we're currently in dispute on that. Also, if you look at professional development, we're at four thousand. So we spent, it was, right now, we're anticipating spending six hundred and eleven dollars this year. We have four thousand dollars in there because we have new people. We have, we're gonna have a new clerk and we're gonna have a new executive admin. We have a new executive admin and I want to give them, get them training, get them certified, those kinds of things. Uh, let's see. My contractual services went up from fifty-one five to sixty-two thirty, three hundred, rather. And that's because of, uh, one, the website upgrade, the, and we're going to be coming to you during a cow to talk about the website upgrade. And, uh, Bercham and Moses because of, uh, the potential for, uh, risk still at Branford Matter because we're not a hundred percent through that. So that's where that increase is. So those are our increases and now I'm standing by for questions. Deputy Mayor Depot, go ahead. What, Adriana?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you answered one of my questions.
Oh, good, just one. I did try to anticipate your questions, but.
So one of my questions is about City Day.
Okay.
And I'm guessing maybe this is the same. For, for the funding source, our actual for year ended twenty-two is zero from City Day. But then our estimate for year ending twenty-three revenues, is that because we did do a City Day in fiscal year ending twenty-two, right?
Correct.
Our, so our estimate for that income under City Day was seventeen hundred and ninety dollars, but then it says zero.
Wait a minute, go back, what year, what fiscal year? Cause that might've been a COVID fiscal year. We just, our first one was last year, right? And we came back?
Yeah, last year was the first one, wasn't it? No.
Two years ago, okay.
So the estimate from last year's budget, the estimate for that funding was seventeen ninety.
Yep. And there's a tax.
But then it says nothing. So, so I guess my question is, this is my real question. We make money at City Day, right? People pay for hot dogs and stuff. I'm assuming that's what that money is. Does that money truly come in under its own account? Or does that all just go in the general fund? And that's why the general fund paid for everything in the actual year ended?
Good question.
Do you know, do you understand what I'm asking?
So if you flip to page four of your budget book, which is the revenue section, you'll see that it does have its own line item. And this would have been City Day, that would have been August of twenty-one.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
And there was, there was nothing come, so I don't know if either the, if the revenue got misposted or if there wasn't a City Day. There was nothing in that account for twenty-two for revenues. So we need to double, I'll, I'll look back at that and double-check it.
I, I guess the reason I'm asking too is if we're just dumping the revenue from City Day into the general fund, then why, why bother splitting it out?
Okay, this, what the split is, the general, when, when it says general fund, that's technically the tax base.
Right, no, no, I get that.
So, so this money is going in, it's budgeted for, so it reduces the taxes essentially by that two, three thousand that's budgeted for.
Right, I get that. The reason that I'm asking that question is right now, our estimate is that we are using four thousand, our estimate for this year is that we're using four thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars of tax money to fund City Day because this says two thousand three hundred and thirty-one of it is coming from City Day revenue. But next year, when we do the budget, is it going to come out the same thing where we have a zero in that line item and the true cost is six thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars out of the tax fund?
No, that was the actual revenue for twenty-two.
But that's, last year's budget showed that the actual revenue from twenty-one was seventeen ninety and now it's showing zero.
Let, let me look into why there wasn't any revenue in there. But the two, two thousand three thirty-one for twenty-three was what was taken in August of twenty-two. So that, that's estimate was based on what's posted to that account.
Okay, I just, all right, I just want to know, because last year, in the spot where it says two, twenty-three thirty-one right now, it said seventeen ninety on last year's budget. So I, it just doesn't make sense to me that now it says zero.
Let me take a look at it.
Um, and then, what was my other question? We went significantly, obviously, it's a small account and a small amount and obviously a worthy cause. But, um, is there a reason that we went so far over budget for City Day? And if so, why aren't we putting more money into that account?
You, you take, go ahead and take a stab at it. As I'll try to take, I'll take a stab at it, I'm going to give the history and it's going to be kind of convoluted.
So, so the, the cost has gone up this, what this, um, revenue, and again, Mary can kind of go into more detail when she comes in with her budget because she has taken over. This used to be handled by the clerk and then it switched over to Marion Parks and Rec. So this is for the food, the tents, the, um, hand sanitizers and those types of things. It doesn't have anything to do with the activities that are out, out there. So that's why it did get pumped this year from the five thousand to the sixty-five hundred was because of the trend of it being more than the five thousand. It has, I believe it's been five thousand since I've been here. Like, I don't think it's changed over the last nine or ten years. So Mary, when she took, looked at it, she tried to true it up to determine what truly was being spent for those items based on the increased cost.
Okay, I'm not asking because I think it should be less. I'm asking because if, if it needs to be eight thousand, I feel like that is a fine amount to spend on City Day. I think City Day is really important. Um, I just want to make sure that we're being realistic.
Absolutely.
With what we're putting in that, um, thing. And then my other question. I'm happy our website's getting potentially an upgrade because.
It is, and what, what we're going to do is we're working with utilities, so they're going to, we're going to split the cost. And the cost was, and like I said, in, uh, the, our cow for April, Sue's gonna, Sue and Dan are going to make a presentation, talk about what the total cost was. I didn't want to put all that cost in here, so what we went back to the vendor and said, can you split it up over four years, right? Split it up over four years so we can reduce our costs and they're going to let us do that. That way, it makes it more palatable.
I have one more question.
Okay, go ahead, Deputy Mayor. Okay, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Last question, okay, so, um, you have the salaries all going up three percent for city clerk, the admin clerk, and the executive admin.
Right.
Does that mean that we are, whoever we hire for city clerk, considering Edward's resignation, are we hiring them at a higher rate than Edward was making last year?
Nope, we're hiring them at the rate, if we hire them before, if we hire them before July, then they'll come in at the salary we hire them at, and then you'll get the three percent, right, or no?
So, just remember, this is the budget amount, this doesn't mean it's what the actual will be.
Right.
So, that's a, that's another whole offline question that, for the mayor, as to where, where that comes in, but just keep in mind, like, from a budget standpoint, it doesn't mean that that is the actual pay that would, would go out.
Okay, so, I guess actually, so this is a related question, I guess, so, if we hire a person mid-year, do we do raises on an annual basis of hire date or annual basis of budget? Or does it depend on the position?
Go ahead.
It's changed over the years. I believe the current structure is set up that you would, whatever your hire date is, once you hit your hire date, you receive the annual increase from the previous July at that point in time, and then July, everybody gets the annual increase for the non-union, that is what is set, but from the mayor's office. All the other ones are, if it's a union position, it's truly based on the contract and what step they're at and the year that they're in.
So, so we would need to increase this amount regardless, because fiscally, even if we hire someone soon, they're going to be, before the next budget, eligible for an increase.
Right, and then another, right.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, one thing I wanted to bring to your attention is on page twenty-one, under, uh, elections, you'll notice that elections are still thirteen thousand dollars, remember, we talked about how we're going to save all this money? Well, we're not saving all this money. So, initially, the initial estimate was sixteen thousand dollars, and I said, nope, that's not good. And I called a meeting, and we had a meeting, and I said, I don't think I should pay, all I should pay for is the cards, the machine, the programming, those kind of things, the workers are already there, and everybody agreed with that. And then I got another email back, and they gave me a quote of twelve thousand nine hundred dollars. And I said, well, I'm not okay with that, and then we went back and forth, and so the, the workers will go away, which is a total of about, let's see, three, six, nine, eleven, two thousand dollars. But the registrars pay, uh, thirty-four hundred dollars will stay because it is a separate election. And just, and it's not, what we all have to remember is for the registrar, it's not about them being there that day, it's the filing of the election results, and the checking of the ballots, and all those things that they have to do, and that's why the registrars pay is still there. So, we allocated thirteen thousand dollars, I think that it could come in at around, let's see, what did I say? Two thousand less, so maybe eleven thousand dollars, so we may save two thousand dollars there, but I wanted to make sure we have the money to allocate for it. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Are there other questions, Councilor Piazza?
This is one is just a state. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, please.
Thank you, um, so I was just wondering, when we were talking about the increase before, I was wondering if it was due to COVID, the equipment that you said will fall underneath Mary, since it was post-COVID, talk about hand sanitizers, and of course, a lot of the prices on those went up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure the, the major, I believe food costs may have been one of the, the increases, because like I said, that is used for the food, the tents, and there may have been additional wash stations that would have come out of that. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but.
And my other question is, where, where does the, um, I can't remember the name of the race, it's kind of escaped my mind, that was in September, where does that fall into here?
Where does what?
The race that they had?
Oh, the Ragnar, oh, no, the, uh, Bru Run.
Bru Run, I couldn't think of that, saved my life, yes.
Hey, that's under Mary's, right?
Is that under hers?
Right.
Did it fall underneath hers?
Wasn't the Bru Run utilities?
Actually, the Bru Run, I think, was utilities, not, I mean, Mary sported in that, she was there, and we had the facility there. But you're right, I think that fell under utilities.
Also, all of it fell underneath hers, I mean, uh, underneath GU, nothing underneath Parks and Rec?
The donation to the, to the chamber came, I believe, was through utilities. The resolution that came to council from Mary was to allow the beer at the beach, because it's against the rules and regulations.
And we're going to need to bring another one of those to you for this year.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, because I know, I was just wondering, and here, we're trying to calculate, but also too, I thought there was also a question back then too, as far as the police force, and how that was getting paid, and where that fell under, and if we were planning for that this year, which I'm sure we are.
If I recall, the, the chamber pays for the police services.
Okay, I just wanted to refresh, okay.
Because that was a question that, that, uh, Councilor Carter had, and we verified that that was going to be paid for by them, and it was. Any, any other questions or comments on Councilor Norris?
Can you please, I think I heard you say something about the website being paid for over four years?
Yep.
But is the work being done over four years?
Nope, the work's going to be done upfront, and they're going to allow me to do a payment plan with no additional, they're basically splitting the cost in four, right, there was no interest.
It would go up, I believe it was five percent, um, each year, um, for the annual fees.
But that was the annual fee, not the cost of financing. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just wondering why.
Why what?
Why we would do that.
Because I wanted to keep the budget down.
Okay. And then another question I had.
Right now, we're at a flat mill rate, three point six seven, which is what I wanted to be able to do, and uh, we're able to do that so far. Now, that amount would make my budget jump up, my budget jump up, but overall, it would probably be insignificant in, in a mill rate change.
I, I guess I'm asking, because I'm, I'm still trying to learn, um, if things are purchased or acquired or completed within a fiscal year, how can we extend it beyond that fiscal year?
Are you talking about it being encumbered and stuff like that, is that what you're getting into?
Even if it is encumbered, how does it get extended into future years?
Well, in this case, it's going to be contractual.
But the work is going to be completed.
Correct.
Okay.
The work is not going to take four years, if it's going to take four years, I'm going to pay for it. But they're not going to take four years, they'll have it done. Sue, do we have an estimate of when they think they'll be done?
It looks like.
I mean, you, you're, this council, this body will get a full brief on, at the, what month, man, April, April cow.
I believe it's going to be within the next few months, it's going to start the implementation this fiscal year.
Right.
Going out of this fiscal year's budget, and then going into next fiscal year.
Okay.
I believe they said between five and six months, and then they're going to do an uplift of the website in three years.
Okay. The, um, I, I was just checking in terms of purchasing policy, if, but obviously, it can be done by your purchasing policy. All right, the Groton, well, the Groton City Day, I'm assuming the revenue just goes into the general fund, but the expenditures are also general fund expenditure, so the two don't mix, so to speak, right? But then it came to the question is, because we talked about la- this time last year, about increasing programs down at Thane Street, and the park down at Thane Street. So, would we see an increase somewhere for these special events and programs that happen in whose budget?
Well, do you want to answer that? Or do you have an answer for it? I have an answer for it, go ahead. You, you buzzed before I did.
You win.
So, from a budgeting standpoint, it would be who, whosever event it is. So, if it was an event that the mayor was being hosting out of the mayor's office, then you would see it in the, most likely in the mayor's budget, but however, most events would be run by Parks and Rec, so you would see it in the Park and Rec budget.
But, but one of the things that I, you're going to see in the planning budget is I put an additional fifteen thousand dollars in for Thane's View Park. So, we have the lower part, which we already have money for, we're going to spend the seventy-five thousand dollars for the study, and we're going to start, I'm hoping that we can be shovel-ready, or actually start the dock project this year, right? It's what we talked about doing, so we're going to do that. The upper part, I still have the Costa House, and we're still deciding what to do with that. I'd like to take the Costa House down, but I can't say that in good conscience when I say I got a space problem, right? So, I need to, my real estate committee is going to be looking at my space problem, help me figure out how to get, get control of that. In the meantime, the planner is in charge of the, um, committee for Thane's View Park. And one of the things we've talked about doing is, uh, doing amphitheater seating and doing some things there, connecting the two parks for Griswold and, uh, Thane's View Park together, so that the two parks, you can go from one to the other fairly easily. So, we're looking at those kinds of things, and that's what we're going to do. Now, I do want to have some more activities down there, I want to have, I want to get food trucks down there, I want to get people down there on the grass, I want people on the grass looking at New London instead of people over New London looking at us. We have a waterfront park, there's no reason why we can't have a premier waterfront park. We are going in that direction, and we're going to get there.
I agree. So, is the answer, yes, we're planning on having special events there in fiscal year twenty-four? And if yes, who's, is it in someone's budget?
Yes, and is it in, yes, it is in somebody's budget, because I did talk to Mary about this, so I know she has it. I've also talked to, uh, Leslie about this. We will find the money to do something down there, I don't know what something is yet, because it hasn't been, and the only reason I say that is because it hasn't been brought to me yet. I'm, I'm waiting on the team to, uh, I'm trying to get it from them and not drive it, I don't want to drive it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this budget? Okay, all right, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn?
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, thank you.